I'll call this meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the reading of a proclamation that I issued on October 2nd and delivered to El Refugio at the women's center. And it's on Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, safety, and peace, tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. Domestic violence touches the lives of Americans of all ages, leaving a devastating impact on women, men, and children of every background and circumstance. A family's home becomes a place of fear, hopelessness, and desperation when a woman is battered by her partner, a child witnesses the abuse of a loved one, or a senior is victimized by family members. And whereas domestic violence remains a major public health, social injustice, social justice, and human rights issue requiring particular attention, and its interventions must be with the inclusion of both women and men at all levels. There is an urgent need, more than ever, to get involved. The wide prevalence of domestic violence and sexual assault, along with the shocking silence and inaction around these issues, compels all of us to come together and get involved to end the abusive violence in our relationships, in our families, and in our communities. And whereas, since 1983, El Refugio has been actively involved in addressing domestic violence in our community, El Refugio has collaborated with numerous people and groups to respond, educate, and bring awareness to all people about domestic violence. Last year, El Refugio Incorporated served 267 women victims, 115 children, and 67 offenders. To this end, El Refugio Incorporated invites all of us to support October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and it will be dedicated to the "No More Public Service Announcement" campaign. Together we can end domestic violence and sexual assault. This campaign underscores the urgent need for involvement by taking action, speaking out, breaking our silence, and seeking help when we see this problem in our life, in our family and in our community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Michael Esmeronis, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is there anybody from El Refugio here? So that was, we, I formally gave that declaration out, or that proclamation out on October 2nd. Hopefully all of you will, you know, contact, see what's going on, and see what other activities are happening sponsored by El Refugio. Next item on the agenda is public input. We have a few people signed up. I'll remind everybody that you have five minutes to speak. If you look up, I will give you a notation at around a minute left. First is Emma Bailey, subject matter, the Center for Gender Equality.
Thank you very much, good evening. So I'd like to just talk a little bit about a new initiative.
Sorry. There's a little, a white button that turns red.
There we go, thank you. I couldn't hear myself, so I figured something was off. So thank you very much. My name is Emma Bailey, and I'm a professor of sociology at Western New Mexico University, and I'd like to talk just briefly about a new initiative on campus called the Center for Gender Equity. The center, as we are calling it by shorthand, is a new initiative responding to a lack of unified educational opportunities regarding women, LGBTQ, issues in gender equity, social problems in Grant County, and the campus of Western New Mexico University. Our hope is that the center will serve as the place where students and the surrounding community can participate in transformative programming and advocacy on issues of gender equity and feminism. Myself, along with Dr. Lydia Huerta, who's also with me, we are serving as the co-directors of the center for the time being. The president of the university, President Shepherd, and his cabinet supported this initiative in May of 2014, and then over the summer, he allocated physical space on campus where the center can be housed, and that's 1211 Mississippi. And I have invitations for you all for the grand opening of the center, which will happen on October 30th, Thursday, from 11:00 to 2:00, with a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 11:15. So I hope you all will be able to make it. In addition, the center, despite the fact that Dr. Huerta and I are both professors, the center actually is housed under Student Affairs, and through the Student Affairs Division, we've not only been able to access some funding for some of the programming, but Mr. Brendon has also given us some money for work studies, and it is really the students who have been doing the programming and putting together some of the great events. So already, we've had an amazing Gender Equity Friday in September. If you read the Daily Press in the last couple of days, you saw the great celebration we had last week of National Coming Out Day. This coming Friday, we have our second Gender Equity Friday. We're also going to be sponsoring, along with SAS and El Refugio, Take Back the Night March on the 28th of this month. The 30th, of course, is the opening. The 31st, we're going to have a Safe Halloween Party for the students and the community, with a Rocky Horror Picture Show as a theme. And then we'll also be celebrating International AIDS Day in December. And then we also have a lineup of programming for the spring as well. So I just want to let you all know about this new initiative, and that questions about the center can be directed to me or to Dr. Huerta. And the hope is, as I said, for us to be the place, not only on campus, but to also serve as a unifying entity for issues surrounding gender in the Silver City area, as well as the larger county. So, thank you very much.
Sylvia Rada, with the Southwest Chicano Music Association.
Thank you, Mayor. Like you said, my name is Sylvia Rada, and on behalf of the Southwest Chicano Music Association, sorry I'm a little bit late, but my health kept me from coming last month and addressing you, and thanking each of the people who have helped us so much, the mayor, the council, city officials, representatives of the city. Like I said, mayor, police department, parks and recreation, tourism, sanitation, everybody just pitched in and jumped in and helped us, and I want to say thank you for all the assistance for this 2014 festival. We are happy to report a very successful festival, both in attendance and community support. We brought in some great music, a super car show, and hopefully all the businesses that were open and involved got a real good boost that weekend. I don't have an exact beds in the head, or heads in the bed count, I said that wrong. But most of the motels and hotels that we talked to were very pleased, they had a pretty close two successfully sold-out weekend. So now we are looking forward to 2015, making some good positive changes, tweaking things here and there, entertaining new ideas for next Labor Day, to continue the Silver City Chicano Music Festival, and we want it to grow, we want it to continue, we want it to be prosperous, not just for the city, but for all the local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Patricia Kano, on handicap parking.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, as you said, my name is Patricia Kano. My comments have to do with the issue of handicap parking. As you know, my daughter, Councilor Kano, has been dealing with mobility issues since before she was on the town council. She has gone from wearing casts to boots and crutches and being in a wheelchair and so on. Her experience has taught us that, or has made us aware, that our town, along with other municipalities around the state and in other states, has a very serious problem, and that is illegal parking in handicapped spaces. The Silver City Police Department usually responds within five to seven minutes when they receive a call that a violation is taking place. However, our officers do not, are not able to police handicapped spaces throughout their workday. What is needed is a group of citizens who, as in other places, can be deputized to actually report such things. There is software that can also be used. It is all about changing our social behavior, and what a better way to change our social behavior than to enforce the laws. All it takes is one citation and a $250 to $500 fine that goes along with it to change that social behavior. So what I'm suggesting is that the town council form a board, just as you have the cemetery board, the museum board, and other boards, that would be called an accessibility board, that could launch a campaign to first educate people that it is not okay ever to park in a handicapped space without a placard, not even to go into a restaurant and pick up your carryout, or to go pay your water bill, or anything like that, or to use someone else's placard, or to use one that is expired. This board would also continue with accessibility issues. I think you are all very concerned about accessibility, and we want more people to come to Silver City. We need to make it handicap-friendly, and also work on the quality of life for our handicapped residents. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kano. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Council Badson.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Western on their new initiative, the center that we just heard about, and I think it's going to be a wonderful program or initiative that will tie the town and the town, so to speak, together a little bit more intimately. So I'm really pleased that the president and the other executives at the university supported that. And I also want to thank Ms. Kano for her comments. I too have noticed that we do have a problem, not just, of course, in our small town, but elsewhere in the world, in other municipalities, with, let's just say, folks not parking a handicap parking unless they have the appropriate decals and other materials. We do seem to have an issue in a couple spots, especially when people want to pay their water bill, I've noticed over the past number of years, especially when I sometimes have to use a cane to get around, and I don't have a handicap parking permit. So, it's just something that I'm aware of. And I wanted to show everyone something that you will start seeing in town at various retail establishments as the plastic bag ordinance goes into effect, and this is the very heavyweight plastic bag. This meets our definition of a reusable plastic bag, that it's the 2.25 MLs weight, actually I think this might even be a little thicker than that. And so folks, if you see, you know, retail establishments using this, they're conforming to the ordinance. I don't want anybody to think that they're not. And it will, it does promote reuse. These can be used up to 100 times before they're effectively recycled, and because of their weight, they won't blow around the same way as those in our bags that we're in the process of reducing the use of. So come January, just to want you to know that this is acceptable, conforms to the ordinance, and I think there's several retail establishments that are considering using this in town. So, I just, I think I want to remind folks that own retail establishments that you just don't have to use paper bags, that there's reusable plastic bags, reusable cloth bags that can be purchased, and just a number of other options for people. So there's never any intent to make everyone get paper bags, just want to make sure everybody knows that, and to use those. So I know that Dr. Terry Timmy from Officer Sustainability has been going around and checking with all of the retail establishments in town, and working with them to make sure they're aware of the upcoming ordinance when it goes into effect, and he tells me that we will soon be receiving the batch of town and other entities' reusable bags that we'll be distributing. We're not sure how to do that yet, but we'll be working with groups to do that. And I don't know if you want to give an update on anything else when it comes to reports, Dr. Timmy, on folks that you've spoken with and how things are proceeding, but I'll let you do that when the time comes. And the last thing I wanted to announce was, in conjunction with the New Mexico Municipal League, Western New Mexico University, the council of governments, the town of Silver City is also in this, we will be holding an Open Meetings Act workshop, and that will be on October 30th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Western New Mexico University, at the Student Memorial Building. Okay, I want to make sure, just in the seminar room, yeah, I get the meeting room, seminar room, I kind of, at the meeting room. So, there's flyers out, I think there'll be an ad in the paper, and asks you to please register, it's free, it's open to the public, it's open to any governmental entity. The individual who will be, who will be leading the workshop will be the General Counsel for the New Mexico Municipal League, Randy Van Vliet. And I just want to mention that the Open Meetings Act, as an act that all of us must follow, that our, you know, counties, municipalities, water association boards, any other sort of governmental entities, school boards, there's a lot of commonality. The difference has come down to why you can go into executive session. Everything else is pretty much the same. You have to notice properly, you have to do all those sorts of things. So Randy will make sure that he addresses those commonalities, and then also address the different reasons why different entities can go into closed session or executive session. So I think it's going to be really quite wonderful. If you've ever wanted anything, or want to know anything about the Open Meetings Act and how it's interpreted, this is the thing to come to. So we have room for about 50 folks in what's called classroom style, but there'll be additional chairs placed along the back wall for folks to be able to listen, if they're comfortable writing, you know, on their laps. We've just tried to do it with classroom style, so people have the room to write and take notes if they so wish. And there'll be a microphone that'll be available, so that anyone who has questions, so that everybody can hear, that also will be available, so folks can ask questions that the entire audience can hear. And thanks to Katz, Lori Ford, I know that Katz will be taping it, so that we can further the broadcast of that and public knowledge about the Open Meetings Act. So just want to let you know that's coming up, and I don't have the council government's phone number, but that's the number that's listed on the RSVP. So you can always call the clerk to get the, Anne Mackey, to get the phone number, or you can contact me, and I'll give you, and I can send you the flyer that was developed. So look for that, and I hope that folks will come. Apparently, we already have 25 folks registered, and it's just been sent out to various entities, elected officials, and things like that. So I think there'll be... Oh, the flyer's on the website, thank you very much, Anne. So the flyer's on the website if you need to know anything more, and that's where the phone number is, so that you can contact, and save a place at the desk, you know, so if you want to write anything down. Thank you, Mayor.
And the Council, Council Raymond Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. Just piggybacking on what's been said, I took a short hike on Boston Hill this morning, and I recovered three plastic bags from prickly bushes, and I hope to see that diminish after January. And the second thing is that they've left, but I certainly hope that Dr. Bailey and Dr. Huerta have lunch on the Gender Equity Centers, the Center for Gender Equity's grand opening. I plan to be there, but then I'm going to go to the Open Meetings Act for a manger. So I need to eat in between, in case they watch Katz.
Council Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kano, thank you, we do appreciate your comments, they are serious to us. Sylvia, thank you for giving us a short presentation on your Chicano Music Festival, and we hope to have it again next year, and hopefully you can do the same thing also. On November 15th, correct, on November 15th, we're going to have a toy run. November 15th, it's going to be a toy run, it's going to be the third annual CYFD toy run, sponsored by the Southwest Charity Riders. You don't need to have a motorcycle to participate, you can go in your vehicles and also. In the years past, we have had a lot of toys, and all it takes is one toy to give to them, and we have a truck that will take it to the CYFD. So with that in mind, hopefully that you guys can participate, and again, you don't need a motorcycle, you can go in a vehicle, you can go walking, but we need it warmer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say thank you, Ms. Kano, as well, for bringing this up. I would just like to thank the Silver City Police Department, because they do respond very, very quickly when there is a call about a handicapped space with a car, if it is not handicapped. Also, just for information purposes, I will be meeting with Chief Ralph later on this week, and one of the things that we'll be talking about, hopefully, is how to get some of the other law enforcement agencies involved in policing that. I know that probably the biggest area of concern in town for handicap parking is Western New Mexico University. They have kind of a culture of it's okay, because they're just going to run into a building, and so we need to work on that a little bit. I'd also like to announce that the Al Tvt Grant County Group, in conjunction with Gamamu and Western New Mexico University, is presenting the names Project AIDS Quot this Saturday. There are six panels from the AIDS Quot that are being shown at Graham Gym. Tomorrow, from 1:00 to 7:00, they will be available for viewing, and from 5:00 to 7:00, there will be a reception, just to bring out more community awareness, there'll be some speeches by some dignitaries and some food, so hopefully you can all join us. The Quot will also be available to view on Thursday, from 1:00 to 5:00. And this year, two of the panels include members of our own community who passed away because of AIDS, and so it really brings home the message that it affects all of us. So this is a really interesting time to go in and look at the panel, if you haven't seen one before. And the last thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to welcome back someone who's in the audience. Several years ago, he left us and went to, paying attention to me, to watch To New City for a few years, and now is back to be the, I believe, editor of the Daily Press, so I believe in my essence, welcome back. Thanks.
Thank you.
We actually had some great public input. When you do talk with a chief, you know, talk about some of those options and opportunities, see if we can help out a little bit. I think the police do an outstanding job in this regard, but there's always room for improvement, and ideas is where that improvement will come from. You know, it's great that the music festival was good this year, we just look forward to it each and every year, and hopefully we continue the success that it's showing right now. With that, is there any other, does anybody need second round? No? Moving on to approval of the minutes. Council Badson.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of September 17th, 2014.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Raymond Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion to second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting September 17th, 2014. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. First report, quarterly tourism report by George Doran, Executive Director of the Silver City Arts and Cultural District. George.
Good evening. I'm George Julian Dorn, Silver City Arts and Cultural District, Tourism Director. You have before you my report, which as you know is not presented in a linear fashion or in the form of many other reports that you see. I'm going to briefly address some of these things, but first and foremost, I want to start with an attitude of gratitude to several people who are here with me that make tourism hum in Silver City and surrounding area. First of all, it's Michelle Gielz, who, of course, all of you know, and continues to work tirelessly on behalf of tourism. And a new person I'd like to introduce is Rebecca Martin. Rebecca has come on as our visitor services at the Visitor Center, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in my report. Starting, I'd like to bounce around and not really go in order of this report, but start with the, one of the primary announcements of the first quarter was from Governor Martinez, who on September 9th announced that Silver City had received full funding for our grant application for $40,000 in matching funds to promote tourism. I think this is a tremendous thing for our community. I have since been up to the northern part of the state to meet with state tourism, to talk about their media plan, to talk about where they're going in this fiscal year, and looking at the opportunities for Silver City tourism to leverage off of their $7 million budget. So I'm very excited about being in partnership with them again. At the regional level, we were very fortunate to host the Southwest Region Tourism Board, and as all you know, there are six regions throughout the state that are funded by the New Mexico Tourism as advertising initiatives for those specific regions. Ours was Region 2 in the past, they've since changed that to call it the Southwest Region. That board came during the Clay Festival, it was wonderful to have representatives from throughout the region at a time of excitement in our community. They went away really thrilled by what they saw Silver City producing, and in addition to it, toot my own horn, I was elected as the chairman of that board, and I hope to forward the region's initiatives at the state level and represent us powerfully. And then also in cooperation at the regional level, local level, Grant County, we've entered into an agreement with Grant County Tourism, we're working very closely with them on media planning, and they've also contracted with us to do fulfillment services for Grant County. And then at the local level, the town, as all of you may already know, we just finished our first quarter managing the Visitor Center, and we're very excited about the initiatives that we've been able to put forth in there. One of the primary things that we're doing, we had the Clay Festival, we had the Gila River Festival, and we had the Red Dot Weekend, all have their headquarters at the Visitor Center. This is a new thing, we believe that by working very closely with the festivals and events, and serving as the headquarters, the the headquarters, the folks that are coming in to find out about the festival will also be able to have access to all of the additional information that we hope will entice them to stay longer and to revisit at another time as well. So that's very exciting and what we've been doing is having exhibits for each of those festivals and events, two weeks to 30 days out. So we had a Clay Festival exhibit, an art exhibit going on. We had a Gila River Festival exhibit and it was only at last minute that we actually became the headquarters of the Red Dot, but we had a beautiful art exhibit going on promoting the Red Dot Weekend as well. The other thing that you will see when you visit the Visitor Center is our initiative to revamp and modernize the facilities to include more interactive and more interpretive. On that level, we're working very closely with the Silver City Museum and we've entered in negotiations with the Forest Service to do an interpretive area specifically about the wilderness. So you'll see in there large format graphics of historic sites. You'll see touchscreens, you'll see live video, you'll see lots of things that will help to educate and to direct our visitors in addition to our wonderful volunteers. On that note, I'd like to invite all of you to volunteer. We are always looking to fulfill that end of things and it is an extremely, extremely rewarding experience. I myself volunteered last Sunday and I can't tell you how wonderful it really is. It is, it's like being on vacation with them. So I invite all of you to contact Rebecca and she'll be happy to put you on a rotation. The other things that you'll see here are statistical analysis, Visitor Center, of course. I'm gonna leave that to all of you to sort of take a look at and if you have any questions regarding this. The one other area that I do want to point out is that our media coverage continues to expand at a national and regional level. Very excited Sunset Magazine, two full pages on Silver City, New Mexico. Fox News picking up on us. Edible Baja, Journey Magazine, El Paso Scene and of course, our New Mexico Magazine. Those are, those are the types of media attention that we cannot, we cannot buy and they go a long way for all of us. And then of course, our social media continues to expand. Next time I report to you, I will introduce you to Jessie Thetford, who's been brought on specifically to oversee social media and she's doing a tremendous job in expanding that initiative. So with that, if you have any questions, we do so much, it's difficult for me to report it in a very short time. Thank you.
Counsel Hanlon?
I have a question. I was today, actually, on the New Mexico Tourism Department's website, newmexico.org, if I understood. And the only event for Silver City that's listed right now is the Southwest Festival of the Written Word and that's not till 2015. So I'm wondering what can be done to put all the other events that are originally now and then on there?
That's a very valid question and Jessie and I were just up in Santa Fe. We met with Jordan Venther, who oversees digital media for the state. Our first lowline fruit is exactly that. We are looking to populate wherever possible in the very near future, every free listing that the state provides on their website. So you're absolutely right, we've been deficient in that and then we also want to promote it to our community because there's areas where private enterprise is also allowed to populate on that website for hotels, restaurants and so forth.
Three of us actually got to see a nice little seminar on the New Mexico True program. Can you tell us how you might be using that or tying into their program at the state level?
Of course, you, I believe you saw a presentation by Secretary Jacobson. She is a fireball of tourism, cheerleader extraordinaire and just being in her presence is enough to make anybody feel New Mexico True. I just spent an entire day at an indoctrination seminar of New Mexico True. We were, we had the opportunity to not only get the background from Secretary Jacobson, but also to interact with all of her staff as well as the advertising agency that has been hired by the state to promote them. It was tremendous in understanding how they develop their campaigns, the areas that they're concentrating on and to see that they overlap significantly with the initiatives that Silver City has already begun. Also, the brand identity of New Mexico True is powerful. They are reaching out at a regional, a national level. They're reaching out to set markets of Chicago, Phoenix, Denver, Houston and Southern California. We are definitely looking at where and how we can leverage off of that True campaign. We are, I believe very strongly in the fact that they go out with a tremendous emotional appeal, the adventure that feeds the soul and the idea of making, taking a physical, a physical location and bringing it into an emotional right is the gist of what we were trained in. Also, their brand identity is changing, so we've been employing that in some of our co-op advertising. That will be changing somewhere in the next 30 to 60 days, so we're kind of sitting on our hands a little bit with them, are moving forward with New Mexico True, but you can see by the back of my shirt, I'm an advocate. So I'm a walking billboard, not only for Silver City, New Mexico, but I also believe in the True brand. We had a great opportunity. It really is a second quarter report, but the state afforded us prime real estate at the Balloon Fiesta at no charge to Silver City. All we had to do was show up and cover our, we didn't even have to cover our own meals because they got us into the VIP tent to feed us and we had an incredible, incredible two days at four sessions of the Balloon Fiesta promoting Silver City. This is a prime example of how and where partnering with the state allows us to go places that we ourselves could not afford to go and I plan and hope to stay very close to those initiatives in the future.
Any other questions for George? Thank you. Next report is the Town Clerk's report on recommendation to designate a voting convenience center for the 2015 municipal election. Mrs. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight I'd like to give you and the public information about voting convenience centers and the auto vote system that I'm recommending to use during our next election. The greatest advantage of having a voting convenience center as a polling place is it allows all of the registered voters of an election to go to any center to vote. I'm proposing that we have one voting center. The voter will not have to remember where their specific council district polling place is. For the 2015 election, I recommend we designate one voting center, as I said, at the Silver City Women's Club for Districts 1 and 3. The Women's Club is centrally located in town, it's easily accessible and there's plenty of parking. When the voters present themselves to vote, the poll workers will be working with computers programmed with the auto vote system rather than the paper signature rosters. The voter will announce their name and address, sign the electronic signature pad and then the poll worker would print their ballot specific to their district. So we would no longer have to preorder printed ballots and have so many unused ballots at the end of the evening that have to be destroyed. So that's a terrific savings for us and a terrific time saver for the poll workers. The voter will still mark their ballot in a private booth and insert the ballot in the vote tabulator machine just as before, so that part of the process hasn't changed. The process of just having the voter information on the computer will speed things up. It makes it easier at the end of the evening for the presiding judge to just initiate a report off the computer and it will print all of the people that actually voted that day. And of course, the presiding judge would still print reports, those tapes, off of the vote tabulator machine, just as we've always done. The other advantages to the voting convenience center concept and the auto vote system is that we would require fewer poll workers and the process of closing the polling site should be quicker because of that computerized report that can be generated. I've checked with many other clerks around the state. I've been in contact with our county clerk, of course, for every election and all of the clerks I've talked to that have gone to the voting convenience centers have said it's great. The voters like it, the poll workers love it and it's just a really wonderful thing that we're doing for our election process to make it a little easier for everybody. In November, I'll be bringing the election resolution to you and in the election resolution, we have to designate a polling place. So my recommendation is that we designate one polling place, the voting convenience center at the Women's Club and I'd love your feedback tonight or any questions, if you have any questions about the process.
Counsel Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that we've discussed at the policy meetings for the New Mexico Municipal League, particularly on the committee that I sit on and also at the Resolutions Committee, is the need to move forward with doing something like this. It makes it easier for the town and for the citizens to be able to go to one place. They don't necessarily, you know, go to the wrong place and then have to get in the car and go somewhere else because, you know, the past, there used to be different voting locations depending on whether it was a general election or primary or school district or whatever and this is sort of, or municipal, so this helps. And then the other thing too that's been brought up is with small communities like ours, it can be quite costly to run elections because not certain, in certain times, certain years, they don't necessarily, folks don't necessarily turn out at some municipal election and there may not be anything that folks feel that they need to vote on, especially if folks are, if anyone is running unopposed. So I think that this will be a cost savings and for our municipality, unlike all the other municipalities in the state, we have to run elections every year. So the cost saving, I know how much time is spent by our poll workers and by you and other staff that help you on election night and I think that this will streamline everything and the results will come faster, but at the same time, the cost saving and assist the citizens in a single location. We're small enough that it works really nice just to have one location in town that everybody can get to, whereas I know that during county elections are, you know, during, you know, the upcoming election, they're gonna have a number of places because you have to reach the entire county, whereas we just have our municipality. So I think that this is an excellent idea and I'm glad that you're suggesting that we move forward with this and that you'll be coming forward with that in the election resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I did fail to mention that it's been very difficult to find qualified poll workers too, to find enough for our election. Plus I have to have alternates, so this is gonna be a great help to me. We'll need maybe five workers at the voting center and then I'll have my alternates. We'll also have the same type of equipment at City Hall during absentee and early voting. So it's gonna be, it's gonna make my life a lot easier, which is a perk for me, but more importantly, it's, I think it's gonna be terrific for the voters to make it more convenient for them and to save us some money.
Any other questions or comments? I think it sounds good and I think it's gonna decrease a lot of confusion and actually make voting a lot simpler and hopefully if we can increase our turnout, even better. I would proceed on that, in the direction you're going. Staff reports? Peter?
I guess I'll go first. I just wanted to update the council briefly on the progress being done at the fueling center. I received an update today from the contractors. As of today, they have removed the dispensers, dispenser and STP stumps and the underground piping. They have also installed the new dispenser stump, STP pumps and underground double walled fiberglass piping. Today, they poured, no, yesterday, they poured concrete in the abandoned islands and ditches. So far, they have the primary, the primary pipe is glued and has been air tested. Today, they did the secondary testing on the pipe. The electricians will be on site tomorrow to complete the installation of the underground conduit. Once the underground piping is tested and ready and the underground conduit is in place, they will work to get, they will work to get NMED and electrical inspections done and they plan on having that done before the end of this week. Once both inspections are passed, they will complete the backfill and plan on pouring the concrete pad on Wednesday or Thursday of next week. This week, the electricians should also be installing the new ATG consoles. The shipment of the dispensers has been delayed to October 31st and once that is received, the contractor will come back and they will install the dispensers, the Fuel Master unit, the ATG components, yeah, once they get that. And then they will also start working with personnel on loading the Fuel Master software, the Prokey encoding and ATG operation. That's it. Any questions?
I have a question.
Counsel Reamis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna know, when is the project slated to be completed? So completion date? Have they given you?
Originally, it was supposed to be by the end of October, but with the delay, it'll probably be a couple more weeks beyond that.
Okay, so probably mid-November.
Imagine.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other reports? Peter?
As you've noticed, I'm sitting in Alex's chair. Alex is out this week. As you've noticed, I'm sitting in Alex's chair. Alex is out this week and he asked if I would represent him this evening. I don't have a report.
So you filled his shoes nicely. Doctor Timmy?
Attorney, give me your office. And, Bill, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I just wanted to add some additional comments to what Counseler Madison said. The town did purchase reusable bags that we're going to be handing out to all residents as well as people in the county and we are in the process of trying to figure out a scheme to get those to everybody and I wanted to acknowledge that the first organization I contacted was the Girl Scouts and they said, "We're more than happy to help the town because the town has been so generous to us in the past and we think, you know, it's an excellent opportunity for us to give back to the town." So I just wanted to acknowledge that the Girl Scouts will be helping us considerably with distribution of the new bags that the town's handing out.
Thank you. Any questions for Terry? Chief? Next item on the agenda is under unfinished business, approval, disapproval of ordinance number 1234 and ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12, 18-6 and 12-6-18D and amending Chapter 50, Sections 50-2, Penalty Assessments of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Counsel Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. During the last meeting, I mentioned it a little bit and our town... During the last meeting, I mentioned it a little bit and our town lawyer, Mr. Scavan, gave us a rundown on it. I think that we should go with this ordinance right here. It had been brought up before and that kind of dissected, and I think we have to go with what the state ordered and go with our own, excuse me, go with our own ordinance. So with that, I will read what the ordinance says here, if I may. An ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12.8 (6) and 12.6, 12-6-18D and amending Chapter 50, Section 50-2, Penalty Assessment of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Whereas pursuant to Chapter 50, Section 51, the town has adopted as its traffic code, the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code 2010, compilation as amended UTO. And whereas the most recent UTO amendments include a new provision banning texting while driving. And whereas prior to the UTO amendments, the town has amended the UTO with its own version of a ban on texting while driving. All contained in Ordinance Number 1207 whereby a new section, 12-6-12.18 (6), was added. And whereas the town council chooses to adopt substantially all newly created UTO provisions banning texting while driving on modifying the UTO penalty assessments associated with. And whereas the town council finds that repealing UTO Sections 12-6-12.18 (6) and 12-6-18D and further amending the Town of Silver City Penalty Assessment Schedule contained in Municipal Code, Chapter 15, Section 50-2, is necessary for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of Town of Silver City. Now therefore, big ordering by the town, by the council of Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, that UTO Section 12-3-12.18 (6) is hereby repealed. UTO Section 12-6-18, Texting While Driving subsection D is deleted. Chapter 50, Section 50-2, Penalty Assessment Schedule is amended as follows. The offense of texting while driving shall be added to the list of common name of offense. The UTO Section 12-6-18 shall be added to the ordinance violated. And the penalty assessment therefore shall be $100 for a violation of UTO-12-6-18. And this $100 would be a good one because, as it was discussed in the last town council meeting, that the judges don't know who has been violated for this section here. It could have been $25, it could have been $50, but I think with $100, a set fee would be okay with it. And I move to approve of Ordinance Number 1234 and ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12.18 (6) and 12-6-18D and amending Chapter 50, Section 50-2, Penalty Assessment of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Counsel Madison?
Mr. Mayor, a second. The motion is stated.
We have a motion and second for approval of Ordinance Number 1234 and ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12.18 (6) and 12-6-18D and amending Chapter 50, Section 50-2, Penalty Assessments of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. And I'll start discussion just by mentioning that this is just nice and consistent. We already adopt the Uniform Traffic Code, which is the major body of our, of our traffic ordinances. We happen to lead the state by having a texting ban in effect already for about a year. And when the state updated their rules, it generally mirrored ours. So by adopting the UTO and having our own texting ban, we basically had two, two bodies of law that read exactly, pretty much the same. And that, and so to avoid confusion, this just makes sense. Getting rid of the texting ban that we had originally, just keeping what's already in the UTO that we've adopted and going from there. It's a, it's a pretty simple benign move on our part. It's just for cleanliness, helping out the police and our municipal judge to work with just one body of law. And with that, is there any further discussion? Counsel Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that, as was stated when this was presented as an notice of intent, that our ordinance that we had passed enabled the judge, the municipal judge, to make a decision on the penalty between zero and all the way up to $500. In the UTO, well, in what the state's law had $25 for the first penalty and $50 for the second, but because the municipal court is not a court of record, it's hard to track first and second offenses. And to simplify things so that there isn't anywhere between zero and $500, I think that the settling on $100 indicating that we consider this to be a serious offense and whether it's a first or second or 25th time, which we can't really track, and that we consider it such a serious offense that we, that we set it at the $100. I think the Town of Silver City followed, I believe, the city of Santa Fe, who had a $100 assessment when they first did theirs. And that included, you know, talking on the phone, doing all of that. And they raised theirs to $200, so they obviously considered it a serious offense. So I think that moving towards a set fee of $100 period really makes a statement as to how important that we think not to text while driving is, just like don't drink and drive, don't text and drive. So, thank you.
Any further discussion?
We have a motion and second for approval of Ordinance Number 1234 and ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12.18 (6) and 12-6-18D and amending Chapter 50, Section 50-2, Penalty Assessments of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code, although in rule call.
Counsel Connaught?
Aye.
Counsel Ray? Aye. Counsel Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Counsel Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a short break. Mr. Mayor, a second.
We have a motion and second for a short recess.
I'll call this moving back to order. Next item on the agenda under new businesses, approval, disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery's OK Toder Fest on Saturday, October 25th, 2014, from noon to 11:00 p.m. on Bullard Street between Broadway and Yankee Streets. Local license holder information, number one, Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And number two, Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. Sam?
Good evening, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel members, Mayor, town officials, for helping us here. I first off wanted to apologize for not having been here last time we did this and thanking the Counsel for your devotion to public celebration permits and seeing us through that time. This is a little different than what we normally do. Normally, we work with another entity on these celebration permits. I also want to acknowledge that this has quite a couple, a couple other steps of paperwork that have also caused a little bit more of a challenge in terms of getting paperwork to you guys, but I believe we have everything in order now. And so here we go. We are proposing a way we would like to celebrate Oktoberfest. It is actually, we're calling it Octoder Fest. And the Oktoberfest is a very traditional way of celebrating community and changing the seasons and, and of course, in our case, beer. We will have celebration feast, we'll have dancing, we'll have music, and we will have many, many people in Lederhosen. We have gone and talked with all of our fellow downtown merchants, as many as we were able to get and gotten a good response from everybody, almost to a person, everybody has just been very pleased that we're doing this. We've also worked to try to invite them in on it as well by promoting specials that they may be renting that day. The kind of paperwork you have in front of us, the most important one is the alcohol and gaming division one. And that is the one that where the town is approving the public celebration permit that would allow us to extend our license premise, or I shouldn't say that, would allow us to serve in front of our license premise there on the street. Along with that is, of course, the street closure request as approved by the Silver City Police. And then the privilege use permit, if I get that right, that Mr. Scavan developed for the last time we did this, when we weren't partnering with an entity that was able to do that on their own, if I've got that correct. So that said, you know, we intend to start the celebration at noon. Just to clarify some of the times, the permit, the alcohol and gaming permit is the one with the most correct times on it because that is the one that guides us in when we can actually do alcohol service. So event time beginning at noon, ending at midnight, but alcohol service between noon and 11:00, which allows us that time between 11:00 and midnight to have alcohol collected and turned in. Also, I will mention that our end time is, also, we tend to try to set those out a little bit later than we expect. That just gives us a nice cushion in case things are running late so that we're able to not run right up against the end time that we'd like to have. So we certainly will wrap things up earlier outside if able, but it allows us that privilege to be able to still be out there if we need to be without running afoul of any, any permit regulations. Another quick correction to our application here that I wanted to mention is that I did meet briefly with Chief Ramon before, before this meeting and discussed the fact that on our original closure request, we had asked from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And we did talk about extending that to midnight, so we would comply with all the paperwork that we have in front of us. And he said that he was open to that and that would not be a problem. So that said, you know, the other reason for doing this, obviously, I just want to put out there is that as with the last time we requested one of these in front of our permitted premises is so that we have a little bit of a safety buffer. We expect a large crowd like this. I don't necessarily expect that everybody's going to be outside at the same time, but it certainly allows us enough flexibility to be able to let people come in and out of the building. If there ever were any sort of issues with egress, it gives us a lot more safety cushion to be able to host a larger amount of people, which we do expect on this event in a safer manner. And of course, makes everybody much more comfortable in doing that. We have plenty of license servers for the extra service area that we are talking about. And as, you know, our requirements dictate, we'll have that one entrance and exit on the, on Bullard Street so that we can monitor not only alcohol service, but people coming in and stay in compliance with all the appropriate alcohol service laws. So, yeah, just a fantastic, oh, one other, two things I just want to mention as well. The, we are also coordinating with the All Souls Race, which is happening that day as well. So we did go to an effort to make sure that we were not conflicting with anything that they're doing. We've been talking very closely with the race folks to make sure that the racer's able to, winner's able to go through and come back. We are hosting their award ceremony that evening. And I've mobilized about 10 of my Toad compadres to run the race as well in our Lederhosen as a show of support for the Silco Theater, just as a little aside. One other quick note, I do want to also thank the chief and his foot patrol, the officers that have been coming through downtown by foot, have been stopping by the Toad periodically just to say hi and make their presence known. And it's been, as a downtown merchant and a pub person, that's a really nice thing to know that they're out there and they've been very friendly and very helpful. So I want to appreciate him and his team for that.
Counsel Mr. Smith? Problem, but I just want to point out, whoops, sorry. Hello. In the application, it shows the location, physical address of event, the name of building or business. It says Bullard Street between Broadway and Yankee. That's not an identification of the business. There's two parts to what the applicant wants to do. First, he wants the right to be able to serve alcohol. Secondly, he wants to use parts of the town's right-of-way, Bullard Street, for his event. Theoretically, he could get the permit to use Bullard Street, but you could deny him the right to serve alcohol on Bullard Street. Or he could have the right to serve alcohol, but the town manager could deny the permit to use the right-of-way. I think that in this application, it should indicate the name of the building or business rather than Bullard Street between Broadway and Yankee. So I would encourage the changing of that to be the name of Little Toad Creek, whatever your, the name of your physical location of your business is, right? And then indicate that, and then I have, I talked to the acting town manager today and the permit has been granted. But there is two separate processes at this point, two separate approvals. One is council approval for the alcohol, the other is town manager approval to use the right-of-way. So for, since this is again an evolving process, we're going to try to make it a little bit smoother so that when the applicant comes, things like the proof of insurance has been done two weeks before, not the night of the hearing, that there's an indication that this is the primary business location, that we're not putting in a form going to the alcohol and gaming divisions, making any reference to local prerogatives to lease our rights of, to allow our use of rights of way. So this has already gone to the, this has gone to the state already, this portion?
This is done, I'm left here because this, I believe, has to get sent out to be approved via...
Well, I would suggest on physical address of event, the name of building or business, that you put in the address of your business.
Okay.
And separately from that, I've already reviewed, you do have a permit, it is the right-of-way. Two separate permissions, two separate processes. Let's not try to mix them together in a document going up to the state.
I understand what you're saying. I guess my understanding of the way that this permit function was that, for example, if we did this like we do for Pickamania or one of the other off-site locations, that we need to designate where that geographically is happening.
Then put your address and then and, put the, the address of your building and then say and slash or the Bullard Street between Yankee and Broadway, Broadway and Yankee. Okay, so that way your license that the state's looking at will encompass the entire area that you want to have served, that it'll be clear because what if you set this off that you don't get the permit?
The alcohol permit?
No, the permit to use the right-of-way. Because I believe we signed it today or yesterday?
Yeah, I believe if we did not have the right-of-way, we wouldn't be able to do anything with it. So I agree with you that it's two different permits and...
So let's just change this and put the physical address of your business in there but and...
Yeah, I would prefer, based on my understanding of the permits to ADD, that we would need to have at least the description of the street location as well. So I'm happy to also... also add our building location as well.
Building location and...
Okay.
And you do have the permit.
I would just say, I mean, you said I was looking at stars, I see a map, because we have to provide the map. The map, the map shows that, but it also shows the location of the establishment. So that would maybe, because the permit does say, as the council, as Mr. Scavron stated, it does say that it has to be, you know, the name, the address and the name of the business. So that your, that the map that's attached to it does indicate the area. And I'm not sure if they would require the copy of the permit that was provided by the acting town manager today.
But still, in this document that's going up, it should be consistent with where the event is going to be, the breadth, the geographic breadth of the liquor license. So the name of the building, the business, because this is, one could look at this and look at the map and get confused, is, are you going to use the restaurant at all, or is it all going to be in the street? So let's, let's make sure there's no ambiguities. So just add your address to that.
I'll be, be happy to add that as well.
And you've signed, as I saw earlier, you did sign acceptance of the permit?
Correct.
And you are aware that the, that by getting the permit, it's just subject to the noise audience and the personal noise of the town?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. During the question, on the permit that the town provided today, that the acting manager provided, so it has a set-up date and time of 8:00 a.m., but the road closure doesn't begin per, per what we see from the chief until 11:00?
Yes, and there was an oversight on that. When we, the first time we did this, just for a little historical context, was with the kickoff dance for the Blues Fest. And at that time, that was when Mr. Scavron developed this document, so that we were, we would be able to, typically, we would be associated with another entity that was asking for the right-of-way. So whether it's, you know, Goth Park or the area where we do the beer garden for Pickamania. And at that time, unfortunately, the, also, Ann was not here, so she alone was here. So through these circumstances for putting this together, there was a couple missteps in not having that permit paperwork together. And as a result, Ann was able to get ahold of me today to say, no, in fact, we do need to have that permit. And so that was just me trying to rush the permit over this morning. Obviously, we would not do anything without the road closure happening. And again, I think if we need to just make that say 11:00 a.m., we're more than happy to do that as well.
Well, I just like things to be kind of purposeful, you know, where things are properly. So, and I would also recommend that while the agreement's been reached with the chief, that there's a record of that agreement, that the closure's been extended. So if the, if the chief could, on the permit materials that the town clerk has, just make a note that he's extended it to midnight, so that it's understood. I just, I think it's important. And just out of another note, I would really like to recommend to anyone who is contemplating doing something like this again in the future, that they really make sure that they talk with the town clerk and get the documents in earlier than the, than a couple hours before the event be, I mean, before the meeting where we're going to be talking about it. Just because some of us, like myself, we work, and I didn't even know that there were two additional documents until about 10 after 5:00. I was desperately trying to down on them, so...
Yeah, I do apologize. And I want to thank the town folks who helped us with this. Like I said, I think this is only the second time that we've done something like this in this manner, although we have done street closures and things before, that a private entity like ourselves has sort of done it in this manner. So we are, we are willing, and thank you for, yes.
Yeah, just, you know, and it's not just you, it's everyone that might be doing this. Whenever, whenever there's a request to do anything for a while, the council has to make a decision. It's nice to have everything sooner rather than later, I guess, just then, you know, rather than that late time. And so, I think with that... I'm going to approve of two public celebration permit applications for Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distilleries, okay, Oktoberfest, on Saturday, October 25th, 2014, from noon to 11:00 p.m. on Bullard Street between Broadway and Yankee Streets. Liquor license holder information, number 1, Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, HC68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. Number 2, Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, HC68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And I believe there's additional lineups that I didn't, that was requested. Nope?
We received all of them.
All right, all right. So that ends my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for approval of two celebration permit applications for Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distilleries, Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 25th, 2014, from noon to 11:00 p.m. on Bullard Street between Broadway and Yankee Streets. Liquor license holder information, number 1, Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, HC68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And number 2, Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, HC68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion second, it is just read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
In the post, motion case.
Next on my agenda, under new business, approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-28, amending resolution number 99-32 regarding the town's procurement code, public works contracts, and accounts payable process pursuant to the requirements of the town charter.
May I, Council? When I was in the city, we called for the purpose of purchasing bulk fuel for the town's fueling station. This amendment would allow the town to take three quotes, in addition to utilizing the state contract for state fuel, uh, I'm sorry, bulk fuel. This would allow us to obtain, get the best possible price for the town at the time, especially with, you know, the fuel prices going up and down. We would be able to, I guess, have a little more control on our costs for fuel, to purchase fuel for a fueling station. The town would not only save money on the fuel itself, but we would also be exempt from state and federal taxes, which would give us more savings to the town. This new system would also give us ability to monitor fuel usage better. I believe they're going on a per key system, which would be assigned to each vehicle, driver, and department. So we would be able to track, you know, who's doing, how often, the mileage per gallon that the town would be getting. For example, if we have a vehicle that's getting 20 miles per gallon, and then all of a sudden it drops down to 10 miles per gallon, we either know that something's wrong with the vehicle, or there is theft occurring. So that would also give us additional savings on lost fuel. The savings that we would be realizing from this, from the fuel, would be kept within each department. Each department would be able to utilize those savings on additional projects and services to the community that we wouldn't normally be able to afford because of the fuel prices, of the cost of fuel. And so, you know, if it be equipment, training, you know, street projects, whatever, you know, we would still have more money available for other projects. And overall benefit the community. The fueling station will be set up as an enterprise fund, like the Water, Sew and Sanitation Fund. We would charge each department according to what they're using, in addition to administrative fee. And that administrative fee has yet to be determined. That fee will be used to cover the operating and maintenance costs of the facility. I know Alex is also looking at possibly, once we get this system in place and all the beds worked out, entering and leaves with maybe other entities, for example, the county, possibly the hospital. And we would also pass around those savings to them. And that's it. Unless you guys have any questions or need more information?
No questions?
Just to you.
Counsel, I miss you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you give us a general idea of how much the tax per savings are going to be? I know that you must have got some marginals about how much this burns now, and asking me what's the projected cost?
Yes, we're currently right now with the vendor that we have on contract. On diesel, we are paying 13 cents above rack, and unleaded, we are paying 31 cents above rack. I pulled out in places, we average anywhere from maybe about 5,000 to 7,500 a week in fuel. So that is a significant cost to the town. So that's a significant cost. About how much do we anticipate, just generally, we might be saving using our fueling station? I'm not sure exactly. I know just in the taxes alone, it would be anywhere between 500 and 700 a week, and then just depending on what the fuel prices come in at the time.
So we're, so we're from 10% to 50% depending on the fuel prices.
Okay, so that would be substantial?
Yes.
And like I said, if it's now, comes on a different...
To just piggyback on that question, so what we would be paying right now, it would be, right now, we're paying 13 cents on diesel or 31 cents on regular gas?
Above the rack.
Above the rack. And what we would be paying is rack?
Yes, rack, and, and then on top of that, we would add the administrative fee.
Which would be us operating that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I miss you.
I think, I'm thinking, Mayor, I think that the other important thing is that we'll be able to really determine, you know, control our gas usage. We'll be, we'll be able to know if there is anything like you have mentioned that might be wrong with the vehicle, which would be, would have to be repaired, or if there may be theft occurring. So it's a, it's really a more, a simpler way of managing what we're using, but then turning around and using those savings to do things that we couldn't have done before with the prices of what we're paying.
That's correct. And we are currently being provided with that information, when they do feel out they do need to put mileage and things like that. But we do receive a bulk invoice, and we have to manually dig for that information, so that the system is just, we can pull out whatever information we need at the time. And as we add other entities, we would also provide that information to them.
And the fact that it's going to be really associated with the vehicle, correct?
Yes, the vehicle, driver, and drivers.
Yeah, I think that that, and the fact that we can offer that service potentially to, to also, you know, pass for other entities, that will help.
Yes.
And we will be charging them the administrative fee as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, there is one point I'd just like to add. Those discussions that I was part of with the town manager about whether this would be used to derive income from those that we're inviting to share, or to buy this gas, and these are much cheaper prices. And Alex's comment was, what Silver City does, we want to help all of the other entities. So this is not going to be developed as a profit-making opportunity to, by selling at higher prices to the county or the hospital. He wants this benefit to flow through to all the entities of Grant County, which I thought was reasonably noble and generous.
Absolutely, I agree. Any other questions? Counsel, Connor?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I need to approve, uh, resolution number 2014-29, resolution authori-, oh, excuse me, my bad, my bad. I need to approve a resolution number 2014-28, amending resolution number 99-32 regarding the town's procurement code, public works contracts, and accounts payable process pursuant to requirements of the town charter.
Counsel, I miss you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our second motion is standing.
We have a motion second for approval of resolution number 2014-28, amending resolution number 99-32 regarding the town's procurement code, public works contract, and accounts payable process pursuant to requirements of the town charter. Is there any further discussion? Yes. The motion, the second, is read into the record. We'll call.
Counsel, I miss you.
I, Counsel, I miss you.
I, Counsel, I miss you.
Motion case. Next item on the agenda, approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-29, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the town of Silver City to serve notice of termination of the town's participation in the joint powers agreement dated December 20th, 2007, which established the Grant County Public Transportation System. Counsel, I miss you.
I'd like to leave it there. I'd like to give a little bit of history about the joint powers agreement, and about Quark Communes. This was associated with a agreement made in 2007 between Grant County, the town of Silver City, the County Arena, and the city of Dimming. Before this 2007 agreement was put into place, Quark Communes was kind of birthed in 2001. And Quark Communes is our transit system, our regional transit system. And as such, it impacts the livability of our rural region, and provides transportation, multi-transportation, to people who are low-income, disabled, veterans, and people in need of medical transportation. So there's a, it's a, it's a strong need out there. Since 2001, Quark Communes was started, and the joint powers agreement, which is an agreement between public entities to work together for some common good, set up a basic operational, and some idea of what cash match would be. What would be about cash match, I won't talk about that, but we know a little bit. Perhaps the 2001 JPO was superseded in 2005 by another agreement between Grant County and the town of Silver City, in which there was more familiarity about what cash match would be going on in the future, and that set up a board that was an advisory board. And then in 2007, the JPO that I am discussing was put into place that expanded the regional network of Quark Communes, and then also established an annual cash match from each of the entities. And that 2007 agreement is what the Quark Communes operation has been running under for the last seven years. In that agreement, Grant County is named as the managing fiscal agent and the operations agent. So really, Quark Communes was the rats, and the, that had it managed, had it staffed, the kinds of vehicles were all really managed by Grant County. And in that document, Silver City in Grant County, we're both obligated to pay $30,000 each per year because of some previous capital and other monies that those entities have put into the Quark Communes. And in Minnan County, we're obligated to pay $60,000 a year. And I was wondering to that agreement about how Minnan County's things would be paid. I'm going to say publicly here that Silver City is always on that agreement, and that has often paid more than that original agreement. But there are some major issues that I want to express to everyone publicly. One of the first issues is funding. The way that Quark Communes is funded... The way that Quark Caminos is funded was via an award from the New Mexico Department of Transportation. And they don't just give us money anymore as well. So there's, there's got to be some pretty good justification for the use of the funds. It's not one-hundred percent funded by the New Mexico Department of Transportation, which is really using funds from the federal government. Instead, there was a required cash match. That means not incoming, so you can't set up a, like a terminal, and say that the terminal is worth sixty thousand dollars a year. It must be actual contractual cash or government-based cash match. And it's pretty good. So as a system that's a regional or a municipal transit system grows, and the expenses grow, the cash match, which is, should be paid by the agreed-upon entities, also grows. And it is going beyond our abilities to provide into Silver City. In that show, there has been a very decision change to expand the system, that has really extended it beyond our ability to keep it up with the payment. At the time that the system has been extended, the government, let's just call it a subsidy award, has stayed fairly constant in terms of proportions, and that other kinds of grants that have been available for public transportation have diminished. So we're kind of in a tough spot here, you guys. So what I want to say here is that if you look at the kinds of work that Quark Caminos does, it started out really as a loop in Silver City, and then some expansions of mining districts. Those continue to be very reasonably varied routes. So Silver City, the Silver City Loop, has on average twenty-two hundred riders a month, and it goes about two thousand eight hundred miles. Let's just contrast those with what's been extended between entities, which was from Silver City to New Round. The Silver City, the New Round, sits on average nine riders a month, and goes two thousand miles. So we can just recognize that there are some big costs in some of the routes, and some of the other routes, and not above the Silver City one, has a pretty reasonable, if you look at transportation performance metrics, pretty reasonable performance metrics, but some of the others are not. I want to check and see if Mr. Scavron has something out here. Can you talk to him a little bit about this, Mr. Mayor?
Good. Thank you, Counselor. I think that you've expressed the issues very well. There should be a recognition that worldwide, public transportation is subsidized. There is no public transportation system that could be affordable to the people that you identified without significant subsidy. The federal subsidies are, Amtrak had trouble getting money, their budget's been cut. We cannot be expecting federal subsidies passing to the state and then to us to continue. They're likely to be diminished. So one of the main issues is measuring the benefits versus the costs. Do you want a tax increase to subsidize Quark Caminos under the present routes? Do you want to put the issue up to bond, put the credit of the town and borrow money? And I can tell you from a cursory examination of the books, that we would never get a rating for a bond because there's no proof that we could ever pay it back based on derived income, ridership. We would have to be issuing a bond and then promising to pay it back with general funds that may be able to bankrupt the town or cause worse harm than this loss of the harmless benefits that we've had in the past. So one of the things that have to be, the major issue from the county, the county says, we don't, we can't do this anymore. We cannot absorb the losses anymore. I think that the decision now needs to be made whether there's an alternate public transportation model with really identifiable costs. I did a lot of the early documents for Quark Caminos twelve, thirteen years ago. There was, there was a grant of, I think, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for planning, that would have identified routes and identified cost per mile and things like that. Well, that money was dumped into the general operation fund, and there was no planning. So although it's a bit belated, I think that if you, the first decision is, let's find out what the alternatives are. And an alternative that's been bandied around, which I think is maybe a good one, is that let the entities, the, one of the other things that happened in, oh, excuse me, one of the other things that happened in the 2007 J P A, previous to that, the assets of the J P A really belonged to the constituent members. If there was going to be a dissolution of the J P A group, all the assets were going to go back to the entities who had contributed. We agreed to give up that right to the county, so that at that time, probably even beginning, before that time, but we were not privy to some of the operations that were going on, the assets were transferred to the name of the county. So all the assets of Quark Caminos are in the name of the county. The county administers Quark Caminos, it decides routes. It has, there was a board also created called basically the System Board, that was, had a lot of opportunities to make recommendations. The board was relegated to a very minor role, and basically this has been a county-run operation all these years. Recognizing now that it can't go on, and it's unlikely that Silver City would want to take over the role of the county and buy into a losing proposition, that the, probably, if the first decision I think would, that would be made was, how bad do we need public transportation? What is the best interest for the people of Silver City? And then, because every other entity is making a decision, what's best for them, not what's best for others. So the first emphasis has to be what's best for Silver City. Some modeling needs to be done, where you figure out exactly what it's going to cost, what you can easily recharge people, and what the subsidy is going to be. And the subsidy is going to be borne by the town's general fund. So that decision needs to be made. Now, the idea of this, or the agenda item is to terminate our involvement. In conversations with Counselor Mansman, she feels, and I agree, that it would be premature to terminate now. But I think that it, that we should, the town should engage in a dialogue, discussions with the county, with the other entities, to find a workable solution to public transportation, keeping in mind that when Silver City is represented at that table, it will be looking toward the best interests of Silver City.
Thank you. So I think you have a lot of history with this process. In saying that show, I just, I'll summarize here, over time, routes expanded, fuel costs went up, those labor and medical costs went up, and there's been a whole lot of additional monetary burden that has been generated in the past seven years. So who have any good solutions that we must suggest? Now, I would like to approach it this way. I would like to respectfully ask you, Mr. Mayor, if you would please direct the town manager, Mr. Brown, to enter into discussions with the other entities from the 2007 J P A regarding the Grant County Public Transportation System. And the purpose of the discussion would be to develop a workable transportation model that would serve the best interests of our town. And options of those discussions should include proposed routes, options for frequencies on routes, actual operation and overhead cost models for each of those options, based upon real data, not what someone thinks they ought to be able to do. And some efficiency options, such as subcontracting to a local small bond service or courier service from either a nonprofit or for a profit entity. Now, that's a request, I respect the request, Mr. Mayor. I believe, I said, I think I may have to beg the mayor, but I think he's, he can do this. I want everyone to say here that upon reflection of the history and going back and reading a very thick file, one from the initial support from the county on Tuesday, that they are seeking collaboration and developing a workable transit model, I now feel that refusing at this time from the 2007 J P A is premature. I therefore move to postpone indefinitely Resolution Number 2014-29, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the Town of Silver City to Serve Notice of Termination of the Town's Participation in the Joint Powers Agreement Dated December 20th, 2007, which established the Grant County Public Transportation System. Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Mansman?
Our second motion is standing.
We have a motion, a second, to postpone indefinitely Resolution Number 2014-29, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the Town of Silver City to Serve Notice of Termination of the Town's Participation in the Joint Powers Agreement Dated December 20th, 2007, which established the Grant County Public Transportation System. Any further discussion? Counselor Mansman?
I appreciate the information that's been provided by Counselor Mansman and Mr. Scavron on the history of the J P A and what we're currently facing. And I support the motion by, that was made, that was why I seconded it, that was made by Counselor Mansman, because I do believe that we do need to have proper research done and discussion with the, with the town manager, leading the discussion for the town, if, as she's apparently said, respectfully request. I would, I would support that request. I think what's important though is, I would respectfully request that it not take forever a day, that this is something with the whole harness provisions, using that rapidly coming upon us beginning this July, unless there's some legislation effects by the, by the legislature. I think that we need to come to a determination on what might be the new law for public transportation and how we can save costs. And in examining the actual cost items, that means also looking at the current vehicles that are used for transportation and their lifespan, and how much it costs for repairs, maintenance, and, you know, gas with those really efficient vehicles that are now available in the market, you know, we can go through all of that. But my hope is that we can come to some resolution on this sometime, at least by spring, where we have enough data to make a decision, so that we can be prepared for, we can know at least then with budgets that we'll have to develop in the spring. So I just wanted to put my two cents in there. And I do appreciate the history, and I do think that a solution can be found, but it would be a very, very difficult decision that will have to be made ultimately. So, thank you.
Just to, just to add to that, based on the letter that we received from Grant County, they definitely want to speak and resolve this issue with all the, with all the entities, and explore all alternatives, all the different types of scenarios that they can provide service. They indicated that they, that they're willing to provide the service, just under a different format, and in light of the losses that they've suffered, I, I can't blame them, and I don't think anybody can. As far as a quick response, I know they want a quick response. They're not going to be slowing down any response. They need, they need a solution, and the best thing we can do is, is to aid them in a, in a quick response, actually. And it, it's been a, you know, it's been a great service. I was on the Board of Area Transportation Authority Board, and from the service that it provides, it's, it's a huge benefit to the county, whether it's the economic benefits, the health benefits, low-cost transportation for many of our citizens. It's, it's a, it's a very important service that we do want to provide, but we need to be practical. The, the cost sharing that we've had historically made some sense in those early years with the smaller routes and a smaller system. And the fact that we've tried to fight growth and inflation with the exact same contributions was, was probably not very wise on any of our parts, especially going a decade later. This is, this probably should have been explored a while back, but we definitely need to talk to them and get some, some better cost alternatives. It may be a reduction in service, but hopefully not a, doing away with, without service. And I think we can provide some of the most needed service within reasonable cost. Any other discussion? We have a motion, a second, to postpone indefinitely Resolution Number 2014-29, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the Town of Silver City to Serve Notice of Termination of the Town's Participation in the Joint Powers Agreement Dated December 20th, 2007, which established the Grant County Public Transportation System. Roll call.
Counselor Mansman?
I'm Counselor Mansman?
I'm Counselor Ray.
I'm...
Counselor Connor?
I have... Motion case. Next item on the agenda is discuss, to discuss and vote on whether to change the town council meetings scheduled for November 11th and the 25th at 6:00 P. M. to only November 18th, 2014 at 6:00 P. M. What, what we have found going into November and December is, our last two meetings fall right in line with the holidays. So it'd be very likely that we'd be moving the, those, either moving or canceling those last two meetings, which could get us into situations of having a month-long gap before meetings, or having a bunch of back-to-back meetings. The solution suggested here is moving, cutting the, moving those meetings in between our normal meetings, and in that way, we're just having meetings every few weeks. It'll allow us to do notice of intent when we need to, it'll be, allow for a more efficient and fluid operation of our council meetings, and still be available to have the holidays off. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Mansman?
Mr. Mayor, I move to change the town council meetings scheduled for November 11th and 25th at 6:00 P. M. to only November 18th, 2014 at 6:00 P. M. here in these chambers.
Counselor Mansman?
My second motion is...
We have a motion, a second, to move, to change the town council meetings scheduled for November 11th and the 25th at 6:00 P. M. to only November 18th, 2014 at 6:00 P. M. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? The motion, a second, is read into the record. All those in favor? Reposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is discussion and vote on whether to cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for December twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen at six P M. Follow suit with that first discussion. Counselor Mason?
Mr. Mayor, I think I also want to note that our December ninth meeting, is that correct? Is the, we have until that date to do that erection resolution, so we're going to retain that first meeting date. We're just going to cancel the second one, correct?
That's, that's correct.
So I'm going to cancel the regular town council meeting scheduled for December twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen at sixteen.
Counselor Amensman?
I'm seconding the motion, stated.
We have a motion, a second, to cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for December twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen at six P M. Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, is read into the record. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Reposed? Motion carries. Counselor Mason?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Reposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.